I'll make a disclaimer at the beginning of my remarks about my Corona beard. And there was a, my wife is not pleased with my Corona beard. So Corona beard, so I'm trying to hang on to it the best I can.
Well, you know, right now it's three out of three with beards and you know.
Thank you for putting me, thank you for putting me in that category. That may be a little optimistic at this point.
Well, Victor, congratulations, by the way, I just got some nice comments today from a few people about how well things are going with online instruction. I think, you know, a couple, I heard a couple of kindergarten comments that the Zooms that they were doing have been going well, so nice.
Well, I mean, obviously, this is not the optimal situation for education, but our teachers have been working, you know, burning the candles really at both ends to do this, and they've been working really hard. I think we're seeing some breakout viral stars, maybe, you know, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Bear.
Daily's Mr. Bear. My, my own son, Joaquin, you know, he's been attending Zooms and also been watching, he was just today watching a Loom video, and Miss Cone made about adjectives and how she, you know, painstakingly goes, you know, through the, you know, identifying adjectives in, in the workbook and textbook. So, I mean, they're working really hard. Mr. Horner's Corner in ECP, you know, Mitzi Ki, everyone's just, everyone's working so hard to try to provide, you know, an experience for, for our lower school students that, you know, tries to provide, give some semblance of normalcy in a pretty unnormal, abnormal time. And I, you know, on my own end, I teach AP World History in this year. And the amazing work that, you know, I've been getting from my students, we had to make movies about history, and it's just some fantastic stuff. Some of them may have careers on, you know, YouTube, making these sorts of, these sorts of videos, where they have clips and then they'll pause or they'll have editing that kind of brings an element of humor to it, or memes, you know. One of the assignments I had was writing memes about the situation, and some were just, I think some were shared on Facebook. I mean, they were laugh out loud funny.
That was fifth, were those fifth grade memes, fourth grade memes?
You're talking about the memes? That was my own AP class, but one thing that we've also seen, and you know, like, some students have just been making videos of themselves, just on their own, you know, showing things that they've been doing, you know, sending pictures of their work, making, one student today, I saw a student, she made a video about her father's family, originally from, oh, from Australia, but her father's side of the family also originated from Malaysia, Borneo. And just, oh, an amazing, amazing video that this, this young girl had and, and sent to her teachers. So, everyone's working, everyone's trying really hard to have, try to as much fun with this as they can.
Try to make it as interesting as you can get. Let's, let's go ahead and, and we get start. We've got 28 participants on the line and, and so let me thank everybody for, for joining sort of a town hall. One of the things that we're fighting with the distance learning is a sense of isolation. We, we work in a very communal industry schools and to not be able to have teachers and staff members to be able to see on a daily basis and talk, as well as just bumping into parents and carpool and things like that. We really don't get the feedback, nor are we able to present the school in a manner which we, we want to present it. So, this is sort of a, an attempt. It won't be the last time that we, we do this, but our first attempt at trying to kind of reach out to our community. And we will take this, or tape this, yeah, I'm such a boomer, but we will record this digitally and, and we'll make it available either off our website or off our social media presence. So if you do have friends that aren't able to get on board, they'll be able to kind of watch this and sort of hear what we're saying. So let me sort of start off and give kind of a, not just brief, but, but a, an informative picture of, of where we are as an institution right now and, and maybe tell you some of the concerns I have for our, our immediate future, as well as kind of go from those concerns to some of the decisions we've made, some of the structural changes we've made in the school going forward. I feel good about where we are as an institution right now. Schools are the product of their teachers and the staff and the program that we put on. And it was absolutely critical for us when the governor went ahead and shut down schools. It was critical for us to be able to create a, a dynamic academic program that would keep our kids going, going forward. I, again, public schools meet with their own challenges, but I can't help but point out the fact that we've made a seamless transition with professional faculty to be able to transition to distance learning at a very high level. Again, not without a lot of hard work on the part of the faculty, but from the outside, I couldn't have asked for a better transition. I certainly expected much more in the way of, of a difficulty than, than we had. And I feel like we've made that, and I think we've shown the general public that one of the values that's different at North Cross is that, and we do value education. It's not a mindless pursuit that keeps kids occupied during the day. It's something that we think is important and we're not willing to dismiss a third of the, a third of the school year, at least without a hard fight. So I feel that we made that transition in, in fine fashion and I, I do want to reach out to the parents and thank them for the numerous thoughtful comments that, that you have sent into your children's teachers or using on a Facebook page or Instagram. I, I will tell you that it, it goes a long way when you're working extra hard trying to create something that's completely different than you've ever done before. And to get a positive comment from a parent, it, it is very meaningful and I appreciate deeply the, the parents that have reached out. So I feel like from an academic standpoint, we've, we've really created a, a good program on short notice. From a budgetary standpoint, you know, we've obviously lost a number of revenue streams because we've shut down the campus. And, and interestingly enough, as, as Devin, Joshi and I have gone through the, the, the budget, we actually are incurring almost exactly the amount of savings as we are losing in revenue. And so when we broke it out and tried to put a predicted model in for the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, we came within $380 of our budgeted number. And so that was a deep, that was a, a deep breath because you, it's very easy to recognize the revenue that you're losing. It's harder to understand the savings you might incur. So, so I feel for this year, we're doing a very good job. We've, we focused on, on the academics, obviously, because it's a little harder to do the, the co-curriculars. But even with that, the, the two Susans and the student government have tried to, to keep things a little bit lively. You know, and, and I think we're going to get through this, this health crisis in, in a good way. Concerns are there, and everybody's aware of this, there's a looming financial crisis that is going to come after the health crisis, well, while the health crisis is finishing up and after the health crisis. And, and you know, we're 20 million people almost unemployed and, and many businesses have been forced to close down and, and so money's going to be extraordinarily tight. North Cross is, is no different than any other business in that, in that we've got to be able to attract and, and hold our clientele, our, our parents and our students and, and to the extent that we can do that, that we'll be more successful in, in being able to operate our business. So there are some business concerns going forward. Again, we've worked hard looking ahead. We used the Great Recession in '08, '09 as our exam, as our, as our example to draw from. And we feel like a, a 10%, an anticipated 10% drop in enrollment is a prudent thing to expect going forward. So we, we're budgeted around a little over 460 next year. And I, I think we'll, we'll stick with that number because I think that gives us wiggle room. I'd much rather plan for something a little more dramatic and then be pleasantly surprised than have to make switches in the budget last minute, you know, in August and, and early September. Toward that end, with that budget, we are able to maintain our, our entire academic program, our entire co-curricular program, including athletics, the arts. So we, we are not changing anything or losing anything in that. We are really tightening the belt through some, some staffing restructuring and natural attrition and using some teachers who had some room in their schedule to be maybe used a little more efficiently than possible, rather than replacing teachers that are, are leaving from, from the outside. So I feel like we've done a nice job of creating a balanced budget based on a little more than 460. Just so you're aware right now, and some of you may have heard David Lake talking a little bit earlier, we are still getting very good admissions, very good admissions activity, which is, is nice. And again, we're doing things virtually, virtual tours and things like that. But we, right now, with contracts in hand, both returning and new, and what we call David's confidence picks, and these are folks that he thinks he's pretty sure are going to come there. And usually he's about 95% accurate in his confidence picks. If you give us that, we're all ready at 475 for next year. So we're, we're between 10 and 15 students, more than what we're budgeted at. So we will continue to try to grow the school. But truly for us, the, the most important thing right now is not just gaining new students, but it's, it's keeping, keeping our current students. So I, I do feel good about that. As I said, some of the changes, and I kind of outlined some of the structural changes that we're looking at in our, in, in the letter I sent home. But we are looking at moving from a three-division school to a two-division school. North Cross, size-wise, is sort of right on the boundary between two-division schools and three-division schools. Generally, schools smaller than us, maybe schools that are currently 460, 450, 440, generally go with the two-division model, lower school, upper school. Schools that are bigger than us will go with a three-division model, lower, middle, upper. Schools that are very big will go with four-division model in ECP, lower, middle, upper. And then really big schools will actually go lower elementary, upper elementary, middle, and, and, and high school, and upper school. So, so this is not something that's unusual for us to move to a two-division model, but we, we were fortunate in that, well, we're, we're unfortunate that Deborah is, is leaving us. Again, she does so much for the school that we will miss deeply, but we were able to use her retirement as an opportunity to move to a two-division school. As I said in the letter, Victor Lamas is going to take over the role of assistant head of academics and he will be responsible for pre-K through seventh grade. He will have assistance particularly in the early childhood years from Emily Brown. And, and Mark Thompson has accepted a, a position at an independent school in North Carolina as their assistant head. Interestingly enough, the school that he's going to is a smaller, a school slightly smaller than us, and they actually have divided their school at fifth grade. So they go fifth through 12th under one division head and fourth down from their other division head. So, but he will be departing. So Stephen Valderras is going to come in as the interim upper school director for the year and, and he will take over responsibility for grades eight through 12. Some of you may have had a, an inclination that something was brewing when we, if you're middle school parents, you'll see next year, we've changed the, the schedule for six and seven to more mimic what the teachers prefer for kids that age group, whereas eighth grade is now mimicking the upper school schedule with block periods on Wednesday and Thursday. So we've made that decision and, and again, with, with certainly some, some, some savings. But also I think there are some, some pluses we will gain academically, particularly in the eighth grade, they'll be able to take some electives they might not have normally been able to take. And they're active already in terms of mathematics, foreign language, the arts. You know, there are, sports, they're already pretty active in a lot of ninth grade classes already. So we'll, we'll make that move. Fourth and fifth grade will be able to go to teachers that are subject-specific. In other words, rather than having a generalist teaching you science, you're going to have a science teacher, Shelly Basile, will come down and will teach science to the lower school, or to the fourth and fifth grade, rather. Lisa Cone will be able to focus on the language arts, Wendy Lawrence on the social studies, and Kate Clark in mathematics. And so we're moving to a, a subject-specific fourth and fifth grade, which is similar to what we did two years ago, or three years ago, when Victor Lamas was actually the math teacher for both fourth and fifth grade. Again, not anything unusual. I've done this in just about every, every lower school I've been associated with for the past 20 years. So I think it's a, a, a good way, I think, from an academic standpoint, it, it levels, or it increases the level of, of, of teaching. So that's probably the big structural change we've made. The other aspect about going to that two-division model is that where we actually had teaching vacancy, in other words, teachers had room to expand out, was in the middle school. And so what this does is allows some of the middle school teachers to teach in the upper school, some of the middle school teachers to also teach some in fourth and fifth grade. So it more fully utilizes the, the staffing in the middle school to take, to take over some vacancies in lower and, and, and upper school. So we get fewer teachers teaching more efficiently and covering, covering all of our, of our needs. So again, these are things that we've been focused on. I, I will tell you that the, some of these things are put in place now because of, of the pandemic and, and associated financial worries facing us. But the vast majority of the changes we're making, we were talking about last fall. And these were changes that we were probably were going to go with even without the, the pandemic. So they really are less about a response to a crisis situation and really are more about things that we've been thinking about for, for years. In fact, when I hired, well, we've been thinking about, you know, many of these for, for years as ways to direct more of our tuition money to, to, to academics, to the faculty, staff. And less to, to admin. So I feel like it's some, some, some good, exciting moves. I think we're looking to the future. We're expecting difficult times, but right now I am remarkably confident, yet wary of, of where we're going in, in, in the future. So, you know, with, with that, David, do you have two minutes you want to speak, or do you want to just go ahead and, and get to the questions, Victor?
I know we have a couple of questions that some folks have asked, but I'd like to reiterate that the, the activity that we're seeing is still good. And it's within kind of what we would expect at this time of the year. So we've been pleasantly surprised that we haven't seen like a cliff happen where admission activity dried up. In fact, you know, it's nice to see that we still have people coming in, interest is still sincere. It was nice to see the JK three program, you know, fill up for one section and now working on the second section. So I think there are a lot of positive things. The internationals, you know, you've already talked about what's going on with some of the internationals. We're seeing activity, but I think a lot of people are saying, gosh, what's it going to be like for the fall? And there's enough unknowns that, you know, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be too confident with confidence picks when it comes to international students, just because there's so many question marks. Examples like, are the, you know, are the embassies going to be able to process a, a number of people that are going to be backlogged when things finally open up? So we, we don't have answers to that yet. So I think the conservative nature that we've taken with enrollment, you know, is a, that's a good one. In terms of trying to reach out, we are trying to reach out, you know, certainly more than we did. We've produced some, you know, very quick tours of the campus, tours of the lower school, middle school, upper school, new library, outside. We've, we've done some things to try to send people who have expressed interest, an idea of what things look like around here and give them a good idea. So I, I think from an admissions standpoint, we're feeling pretty good, pretty good about things. So I'm at, you know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm happy with the way things are going right now. And I can't, I, I can't go without mentioning how there is a buzz about the difference that people are seeing in what we're doing. You know, Julie, I'll mention Julie Avitzmark again, for anybody that didn't hear. I mean, Julie spent a half hour talking with a pretty good audience last night on growing up in the valley, and we reposted that. And she's actively working with all of our students still, you know, on a one-on-one basis, you know, helping them through some of the decisions about which of the schools that is, that's, that have accepted them they should think about going to, counseling juniors about, hey, in the absence of school going on, what can you do to distinguish yourself among the pool that's going to be going in next year? Don't look like, you know, don't look at this as anything else than an opportunity. Get yourself on waiting lists and mailing lists and things like that. Take advantage of this time to let other schools that you're interested in know what's going on. So when Julie talked about that, it just reminded me of just how much of the school, not only the teachers, is still very active in doing things for students. So that's what I would probably add.
Cool. Victor, you got 30 seconds?
30 seconds, less than. I'm excited to be in this new role as head of academics and to, you know, expand, expand into, into Eaton Hall as well. I'm going to have a good team. We're, we've already been speaking with teachers on, on specifics of this, what, what all this looks like. And, and one thing I can say is, for the most part, for the student experience, much of it will remain, you know, optimally as, as, in the same way. So, you know, lower school students, fourth and fifth will remain in Ellis Hall, you know, for the instruction and sixth and seventh. And, and, you know, they're going to remain in Eaton Hall. But, um, you know, we are streamlining, streamlining some administration, but, um, you know, much is going to continue marching on really well. Ready to?
Listen, we've got, we do have a few, a few questions queued up. The first one is a fairly easy question, asking about the future of, of North Cross Shanghai. They are not back yet in person in Shanghai. They are still distance learning in their classes, which they have been since probably about four weeks prior to us distance learning, five weeks prior to us distance learning. But Shanghai is starting to, to wake back up. And I think within two weeks, they're supposed to have kids back in class in person. It was interesting, Zach DeMoss and Susan Baker did a great job of getting our faculty in Shanghai fixed up with, with Zoom meeting. And so the teachers have been teaching from all around the world. They've been teaching our students in Shanghai. And again, we have 47 new students that started after the Chinese holidays. So we continue to grow. Now that we have a, a new campus that's ours, we were able to, to grow to 800. So we're at 250 right now. So it's, it seems to be working quite well and, you know, it's sort of a hedge against students that come over from China. If students want to go to University of the United States, but they're not able to get into China, a school like North Cross Shanghai is, is the next best thing because they can get an American education and still be in China. So it'd be interesting to see how that actually impacts in, in enrollment. I'm sure there are going to be a number of questions about the, the middle school because obviously that's the, the direction where more has been, more is happening. It'll be a small middle school next year, probably in the mid 80s, unless David starts cranking them in. But again, with a relatively small fifth grade class moving up and, and so I think it, it'll be a, a small but intimate group. Grade six through eight will still be housed in the middle school. All the kids will still have lockers in the middle school. The, we have two teachers in the middle school that will be teaching only eighth grade along with some high school classes. Ryan Cook will be teaching eighth grade social studies and teaching some of the high school social studies and, or high school history. And Robyn Garrett will be teaching the two eighth grade language arts, as well as teaching some high school, high school English. So the eighth graders will actually take those classes with their teachers in their regular classes in Eaton Hall. They will still travel for, for math and, and, and foreign language. And they'll still continue to use, be connected with the upper school as far as chorus and, and band. So the eighth grade will stand apart a little bit from a schedule standpoint, but they'll still be housed and take most of their classes in, 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 in middle school. And then on the other, on the other side, the, the middle school teacher that's going to be teaching, Shelly Basile, who teaches in the, will be teaching in fourth and fifth grade, she will actually go down to, down to Ellis Hall to teach her classes there. She won't, she won't bring the kids up to her, her classroom in, in Eaton Hall. So yeah, still housed and still housed in the middle school, taking a few classes there, a few classes in the, in the upper school. The eighth graders will also attend, will also attend morning assembly with the upper school and, and they will caucus with the, with the upper school. I, I believe that from an academic standpoint, we're going to be very positively impacted by this. And we're, we're still working and, and again, I caution you, we have five and a half months to come up with the exact answers to these, but we are still working on the, the softer issues. Certainly there's a big difference between an eighth grader and a 12th grader. And so that's kind of thing that we need to make sure that we're aware of and, and we structure around things like student government, student dances, intermurals, many of the things that the eighth grade currently do right now. It is our intent that we maintain all of those as, as much as we can. The other thing I will say about the, the eighth grade is when you think about it, you immediately think, oh my gosh, the eighth grade is going to go up to the upper school. And they're not going to know anybody, there's going to be all these old kids and it's going to be terrible. Really, it's not that. It's really the eighth and the ninth grade are moving to the upper school. So the seventh graders are going to be hanging out with the same eighth graders now in eighth to ninth grade. So it really will be two classes. And, and the way we're really structuring this is keeping the eighth and ninth grade together with advisors, with lunch, those types of things, and then keeping 10th through 12th together. So as I said, we haven't got it all nailed down yet. But as I said, we, we, we're, we're down to where we're talking about the actual nuts and bolts of the, of the transition now, as opposed to the bigger picture things, which were who's going to teach what and how we're going to structure staffing and those types of things. So there's still a lot of work to do, but I feel very good about where we've come from our, from our decisions. And then, and then the last one that I'll, that I'll take before I, I hand it over is what is the strategy? Should the lockdown continue even at a limited level until the school starts? what is the strategy should the lockdown continue even at a limited level until the school starts? We're, we are anticipating from, from all our planning that we will not have the ability to be back in groups until July. And the reality is that may prove to be optimistic. And so we had, the first thing that we've really scheduled for the new year is we anticipate an ECP literacy and fun class starting last week in July. And this is for our current ECP parents. The idea is that we're going to do a lot of work on both literacy and numeracy on a, on a pretty intensive basis for these guys for about three hours a day. That's the first thing that we really have planned for the new year, and that's the last week in July. I will be very disappointed if we can't get back in. Remember, we start September 8th. I'll be very disappointed if we can't get started on September 8th. The first response we'll have will be, we will delay the start of school to a month, you know? If we, if we can't get in September 8th, we'll, we'll shoot for October 8th. And, and we'll just go a month later at the end of next year. And, and then, you know, if it's, if we've got third wave or whatever, then we'll, we will, at that point, go back to distance learning in October. And we'll, we'll, we'll go distance learning until we are allowed to, to get back into, to normal school. You know, I'm kind of hoping that doesn't happen, but that's, that's our plan right now, is to buy a month, and then if that month isn't enough, then, then distance learning again. Eighth grade athletics. Victor, you want to take eighth grade athletics?
Yes, sixth and seventh, I mean, middle school sports aren't gonna change very much. In terms of eighth grade athletics, we're exploring the options of whether, you know, there are some eighth graders that already play on some JV junior varsity teams as well, and how best to go about that within their schedule. So, and there are plenty of eighth graders that also, you know, play with, you know, the sixth and seventh teams. But so in terms of the exact specifics, the goal is to get, yes, the eighth graders that can and want to play, you know, at the JV level or, or varsity level there. It's just, you know, it's just nailing down the specifics of the schedule. But that is the goal.
Ones that are, the ones that are playing, the ones that are playing middle school sports, and they will have a seventh grade, a seventh period free.
That's the goal, that's the goal in terms of the, in terms of the schedule.
Which will allow them to go straight to, to middle school practice at the appropriate, at the appropriate time.
Um, and then just to say as well, to talk to me while we wait for other questions, many of you, you know, I've taught many of your sons and daughters, you've known me for a while, and, you know, what's my, what is my role gonna be there? It's gonna be, I'm gonna be very hands-on, metaphorically speaking, right? In, in this age, but I'm, you know, wandering through the halls, making sure I'm talking to students, pretty, pretty involved. I also have the, you know, the goal of trying to get some more of that, um, you know, that courtesy campaign or just, uh, you know, really being super involved with the students and trying to, you know, guide them and, and in terms of character. I'm excited, already spoken with a number of the middle school teachers as well, and I think we're all on board, and we're excited for next year.
One of the questions that came in talks about construction and where are we with construction? You know, I'm here physically on campus every day, and, you know, I'm just amazed at how much progress is being made. There are a lot of things going on, you know, whether it's tearing down the ceilings and things like that in the upper school to the work that's going on the outside. There's, there's a buzz all the way around here, and I think, and Chris, you can verify this, but I think we're, you know, very much ahead of schedule at this point, so we're taking full advantage of that. The other thing I think I see is that our custodial staff and the maintenance guys are really taking this time to get to some of the project work that usually is put aside for the summer. So it's nice to see that, you know, in addition to all the deep cleaning and things like that, some of the repair work and things like that are going on regularly at the school. So that's the update from my perspective on construction.
We, we, we will finish at the same time we're gonna finish. Anyway, I think probably the big difference is with the, the moving out of school early. It's allowed MB builders to get into Willis Hall much earlier than they expected. So I think what will benefit from will be that the interior renovation of, of, of Willis Hall will be completed in time to give the teachers a little more relaxed move back into their classrooms. Cause you just know that if we had started, you know, June 1 on Willis Hall renovations, they, it would've been the last minute for them, you know, having to move in while construction guys are going out the back doors or coming in the front door. So it's a much more relaxed pace now in, in terms of the interior renovations. The exterior work is, is, just continues to proceed. You know, they're, they're working around the backside of the theater now to pour the slab and put the iron, put steel up for crosswalk and, and the backstage areas. So that's, that's all occurring. So it's pretty, pretty, pretty neat stuff, and they continue to, to work very hard. Aaron Jones, his question about Aaron, we have a couple of teachers who are leaving this, this next year. Aaron has retired. She is going to do grandbaby duty and soon she's allowed to travel the world. And she and her husband are both retiring this year. And so Aaron will be departing, as will Joe Harris. Joe's moving down towards, I think, the tidewater area. I think Isaac is actually gonna go to school at Hampton University. At least that's the last I heard. And so the two of them will be moving down to that, to that, to that region. So, so Joe will be, will be leaving. Of course, John Circo left over, over Christmas. And sort of not particularly timely, but, but departed. So of those three faculty members, Aaron Jones, we will not replace Aaron Jones. Jared Hanson is going to teach sixth and seventh grade mathematics. And then eighth grade will be taught by upper school teachers. And I haven't determined which ones they're going to be right now, but they will, they will be taught by, by upper school mathematics faculty. And so I think that'll, that'll work out well. One of the things that we've done is, because our middle school has gotten so, has gotten small because of that, that Great Recession bubble or dip in enrollment that's coming through. Again, if you know our school, we're full in the upper school, full in ECP, and then we've got a dip that's right now centered on sixth grade, which are the folks that, that would have started school, their kids have been born during the Great Recession, '09, '10, '11. So because we have a, for the time being, we have a smaller middle school, we've gone to two sections of each class, each discipline in each grade level. So two sections of math. So we have six sections of math, we have six sections of English. And what that's done, that's allowed us to use one of our teachers, for instance, in, in English, Ale Kyre can teach all sixth and seventh. And then Robyn Garrett can, can teach eighth grade and, and upper school. So we're able to use our middle school teachers to fill in for, for spots in, in the, in the upper schools as well. So we'll, we'll have math, upper school math teachers and teaching Algebra I and, and geometry next, next, next year. Ryan Cook will be moving up and be taking over many of Joe Harris's classes. And, and then we have hired a new teacher for Spanish. His name is Johnson Mahaly. And he is, I guess he's from the tidewater region, Roanoke College graduate. So he knows the area well. He was a Phi Beta Kappa. He's not a native speaker, but Victor, Victor tried him out, and he evidently speaks the, the language pretty well, so.
He does. He's a pretty impressive, pretty impressive young man, and he has classroom teaching experience. He's thought, he was rated very highly by, by everyone at Roanoke College. So we're really excited for him to come. I think he's gonna bring a lot of energy, and I think the students are gonna really connect with him.
So really, he, so Johnson will be the, or will be the only new teacher that we'll have on campus next year. We do have a new Director of International Recruiting, as well as an upper school admissions person, will be coming on from the Asheville School. And he'll be coming into our admissions department to help out, to help out David there. And many of you read also that Joanna Coleman is, is, has departed because she is going to take care of her, her, her live-in mother. But Joanna is, we're, we're going to move David into a, a Director of Institutional Advancement position, and he will have seven people he, he works with that will cover development, admissions, and, and marketing. So again, I think another shift there. And that's what I was gonna say earlier, when, when I hired Joanna, was it four years ago? We were talking about an institutional advancement position even back then. I actually thought that the old man, Old Man Lake was gonna retire on me, and Joanna would move her into that position. And so the, the old man is still here, so we'll, we'll hang on to him for a little while. And again, I think he's got a, a, a pretty vibrant bunch of folks working for him. And, and, you know, we're gonna go about re, restructuring that, that side of things. And I, and again, I think more efficient, but, but still as, as equally as effective.
And we still got energy for new ideas. One of the, I noticed one of the questions that came up was talking about, had we considered online instruction for, as, as a way to attract outside students to North Cross? And actually, we had a pretty good and vigorous debate about that. You know, there, well, in, in some ways, it appears to be something that would pretty, pretty much be a slam dunk to do. There were enough issues that said, maybe we go gently into that. Right now, there've been a couple of people that, because of their dissatisfaction with what's going on in other places, they've sought us out to become students here. So, you know, obviously, that's the way we would like to go. The other thing, if, if you missed it when we were talking a little bit before this session started, one of the tabs that we're creating, and others encouraged us to do this, is how we're doing distance learning. Because in some of the forums that we've been participating in, a lot of folks have really liked what they heard with what our teachers are doing. So we're creating a tab on our website to promote our expertise with distance learning. So it may grow into that at some point, but, you know, at, at this point, there were enough things to say, let's concentrate on doing what we're doing for our current students right now and kind of take baby steps toward doing that in the future as we gather expertise to be able to do it.
The reality is that that would have been a very rich area, probably 15 years ago, to, to have gotten into. And, and really what happened is a number of, of schools, as well as a number of states, have worked pretty hard to create online programs. And so it's a pretty competitive market right now, and there are people that, that, that make millions of dollars off that market, and thus they put millions of dollars into their product. So it would be difficult to, on a, on a large level, to, to do that as say a fundraiser, as a money maker, revenue producer. But certainly, and don't tell this to your kids, the, the concept of, of snow days, you know, bah humbug, but the reality is if, if we're doing distance learning, there's no reason why, you know, if there's a snow day or two days or three days, we don't drop right in and, and distance learn on our snow days. You know, my wife would kill me, I'm sure, but, cause she loves the snow days, but.
Well, one of the things that was evident, and I'm, you know, I'm glad that the school decided to offer the summer program for the younger kids, our ECP kids, is that a, a great part of what happens on campus is the socialization part, you know, the interaction of students. And I think particularly, you know, we all feel a, a lack of that right now, but I'm glad that we're doing that for the younger kids, because part of their education is really the things that they learn in a group and together. And, you know, they grow as young individuals, and I think that's important. I've had friends that have been homeschooled, and most of them say the same thing, that they miss being with other people in those interactions, not just for socialization, but the way our classes work, when you have other people around you expressing opinions and involved in debate and discussion, so much more learning happens that way. So, you know, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the distance stuff, but at a distance.
Yeah, Victor, I'm gonna let you take the next one. We, we haven't been asked this question, have we, David? About Victor teaching AP World?
You know, I'm gonna, ah, um, so I've always, I mean, I came here 20, I came here 20 years ago, you know, started fourth grade, fifth grade, and then I moved up and taught AP World. I love it, um, I love it, I, I really, I really enjoy it. Every year, I have just a bunch of just wonderful students, and we have a lot of fun. They're, they're a captive, they're a captive audience for my movie quotes, right? You know, darn Google, I don't wanna get too PG, you know, PG 13 language, but darn Google for, cause now I can just Google a movie quote, right? Cause that's part of the, you know, like, oh, who said this? So I've been reduced to, like, sending videos of me whistling a tune to see if they know what movie that's from, because they can't Google that. They just go to their parents and say, oh yeah, it's an old man movie that Mr. Lamas quotes. Um, the honest truth is, the honest truth is, I don't, I don't know. Um, because I have, as my, you know, as Director of, you know, grades up to seven, and, you know, additional with a little bit with eight, and then my, my position as head of academics, I think my first responsibility has to, of course, to be on site as much as I can with my, you know, with Eaton Hall students and Ellis Hall students as much as possible. My, that's how I see myself primarily. Um, so honestly, it's difficult, it's, it's still a difficult choice, and I, I'm still, and I'm, I'm being completely upfront with you, I cannot give you a hard answer there. And I'm talking with Mr. Baldere's about it, but my first priority in that sense has to be, of course, my administrative role. But I mean, if, if I don't teach AP World next year, A, um, the person who does will have everything that I, everything that I've had and have ever done with it, will also have my mentorship of it. I mean, I'm not, but I'm not the Gandalf of AP World history. But I, if I can't teach it next year, I will mourn, I will mourn, because it will be the first year at North, you know, that I've never been a, like, a, you know, a teacher of a class. And of course, I just want to do a good job, you know, in both, in, in, in these roles.
Jenny, from a, from my perspective, I'm, I'm, I really am leaving it up to Victor. There's a lot to be said for that being a showpiece and, and, and keeping Victor in the classroom. And, but at the same time, I also don't want to ask him to do something that he, he feels horrible, horrible about. There are discussions going on right now with Robert Robillard and, 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 and as the, as the department chair, about whether or not Ryan DeMarco would, would take over for Victor. Some of it may have to do with how much we have, uh, you know, what faculty we have to be able to teach the classes that we need to, to teach. The upper school will be smaller next year because we're losing 48 upper school, or high school kids, and we're, or 12th graders, and we're, we're taking on maybe probably mid thirties in, in ninth grade. So we will drop a number of kids, at least one section. So we have to see how that all, how that all plays out as well. So we have to see how that all, how that all plays out as well in terms of, of scheduling. But I, I'm with you. It would be a sad day when Victor is not teaching, for sure.
And, and. Finish on that. Truly, it's not, thanks, just thanks for the question. You know, I, I just have to dial down. We still have, we still have time.
Yeah.
We still, I don't have a Gandalf voice. Oh, shall not pass! Right? But it's still, it's still up in the air.
Yep. Well, guys, listen, as I said, we'll do this, we'll do this again. As I said, part of what we don't get from being remote is, oh, there are other questions. Okay, that's cool.
There's one about prom.
Oh, graduation and prom. Yeah, we, we, I don't care what happens with, with timing, but we will have a graduation ceremony for, for this year's senior class. And right now, we've created two extra dates, one in late June, one in late July. The, it's becoming apparent that the June date is probably not right. But if, I think it's like July twenty-third or twenty-four, something like that, there, there is a, there is a, a date and we have booked a church for the baccalaureate. We've booked a place for senior dinner. We've talked to our speaker about being able to do it. So all those things are, are booked and set. And so we'll do that. And our goal is to make it as normal as it can be, you know, senior dinner on a Thursday night, baccalaureate Friday night, graduation Saturday morning, graduation reception at the headmaster's house, to do it as much as we can. And even what we'd like to do is, is to the extent that we can create some sort of social event along the way that would sort of serve as a surrogate prom for that group, what that would look like, I'd leave to people who are more social than I am. And, and to do something as, as, as for fun like that as well. It's a, it's a raw deal for, for anybody who's a senior this year, whether it's college or, 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 or high school. And so we'll do something. Even if we can't do it in July, if we do it the weekend after Thanksgiving, we will still have a graduation for those people that, that can come back. So we, we gotta do it. And, and I think somebody, somebody's putting down July twenty-fifth. That's a great date except for the fact that I'm going away on my thirtieth anniversary, my thirtieth wedding anniversary trip, you know, on the twenty-fifth, so. On July, July twenty-fifth. I think it is, yeah.
Get that day right.
No, no, August fourth, I know that, I know that. I'm good on that one, I promise you. So, well, awesome. Well, listen, as I said, we'll try to do these periodically. I said, these, we don't get the, the carpool conversation. We don't get people walking through. It's kind of a lonely existence and, but we'll continue to try to do the best we can. Please stay positive. It is going to be very difficult as we go forward and we get exhausted and tired and, hopefully, what we're doing gives you just one little thing that, that, that kind of keeps the kids focused for a little while during the day and, and, and we can help out in, in, in any way we possibly can. Again, keep your kids focused and you guys stay safe, social distancing and, and take care of yourselves. Let us know if you have a problem. Thanks.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, thank you so much.